Josh Hager, President of the Bismarck School Board. It's 5:15 on Monday, August 11th. I call this meeting to order. Welcome to those of you who are joining us both here and online. You can find our agenda and follow along under the School Board tab at bismarckschools.org. Dr. Scher, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Hager?
Here.
Mr. Eastgate?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Mrs. Peterson?
Here.
Ms. Preskey?
Here.
Dr. Fosnot, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance is issued by the Department of the Interior. In due repartee, we wish to stand for admission under God, in the name of the Lord, the Lord has seen justice. 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 The Lord has seen justice.
Item 1C, BPS Mission, Vision, and Values. The BPS mission is to empower every learner to thrive. The BPS vision states, "Together our strong relationships build inclusive, collaborative, and innovative environments that create agency and inspire a passion for learning, excellence, and discovery." BPS values are inclusion, excellence, innovation, and leadership. You'll also find a link in the agenda to the BPS strategic plan. Item 2 is to adopt the agenda. What are the wishes of the Board?
I'll move that we adopt the agenda. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Dr. Scher.
Eastgate?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Preskey?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes, motion passes. Item 3, Focus on Success. We do not have a Focus on Success for this August meeting. So that brings us down to item 4, which is Public Comment. The Board recognizes a central role parents play in the education of their children and supports active parent involvement in the education process. The Board's practice of public comment reflects and aligns with Policy BCBA and the spirit of its intent. For classroom issues, it's best to follow the chain of command, teacher, principal, assistant superintendent, superintendent. For district issues, please reach out to Dr. Fosnot. If you do speak tonight, we simply ask that you be responsible, be helpful, and be respectful. Our BPS students deserve to have adults model the expectations that we have for them. Group starters, select one spokesperson. Individuals will be limited to no more than four minutes and will be notified with 30 seconds remaining to conclude their remarks. The Board will not debate issues as presented, but will take such matters under advisement. With that, please stand and approach the podium if you wish to speak tonight. Seeing nobody, public comment is now closed. Item 5, Monitoring District Operations, R1 Mega Results. Dr. Fosnot.
Good afternoon, Board members. Nice to see you and work with you again. I would like to call up the podium tonight, Dr. Johnson, to present to you our Mega Results report. Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you, Dr. Fosnot, and President Hager, members of the Board. Beautiful evening here. R1 Mega Results, it's that time of year, again, our monitoring report is always a year slightly behind, so this is from July 1, '24 through June 30, 2025. So again, as we take a look here at the Mega Results, we listed that we believe that we're making reasonable progress with exception. Nine of our indicators, six of them showed that we either met or are making reasonable progress, two were making reasonable progress with exception, and one failing to meet the target. We continued to outperform the North Dakota State averages in multiple areas, including graduation rates and engagement and other measures that we look to value, even though we do have some ambitious and stretch goals for those targets. Graduation was down this year. We're at 84%. That's 4% lower than the previous year, 11%, of course, below that 95% mark, but yet 2% higher than the state average. And you'll see, if you look comparably with the state, you'll see that the state dipped as well. Part of that we might attribute to a little bit being around still some of that post-COVID as kids moved out of, and there's other factors that we continue to dive into. I'll share a little bit of data around that, too. As I had indicated in the report, that you see discussion that we've had before about that dosage. And to the public as well as the Board when we talk about that, we've done some other internal data that looks at if you're part of our school district for the last seven years, middle school through high school, what do your success rates look like? And I'm proud to say that there's a 97.82% overall. So that means if you're here and you stay with our district, you have over nearly 98% chance of graduating on time with that cohort. And to that end, just to clarify, too, if your son or daughter might be part of Life Ed or some other things or continuing on or coming back for a fifth year, those won't count as part of that cohort data, too. So again, we know that we have some students that fall into that. We also continued to outperform at nearly 80% of our special education students if they've been part of our district that whole time, our graduating. Ninety, over 90% of our students from low socioeconomic backgrounds, if they're part of our district the whole time, are graduating on time. Again, looks at showing that parent partnership that we so desire. When we drop into some of our indigenous populations, 100% of our students that have been part of our district the whole time graduated. Again, we obviously have that duty and the privilege to serve all students, whether you move here in April before your senior year or you move here at the beginning of your ninth grade. But again, just knowing that sometimes people write a different narrative, but I want to know that I, with good confidence, believe that we're doing a great job in serving the needs of our students here in Bismarck and meeting those needs of parents and family members who entrust us to take care of their kids during that process. So I just want to add that to that. Completers rate, you see that we are at 91%, slightly below the 95%. What that does is it adds in those kids that graduate maybe a year later. Some of our Life Ed kids now count as a completer outside of their cohort group of initially may have been part of. We're up slightly 2% in our post-secondary enrollment. We see students, again, at rough target of where we want to be, but again, what's right for you? If that posts secondary enrollment, whether it's going to the military, entering the workforce, an apprenticeship, but with that, we do highlight our two- and four-year graduation, or sorry, our two- and four-year university program. So I also would take opportunity to say that we continue to see increases in our service hours and our career exploration activities. We still hold pretty tight on that capstone project, so that is a really defined and tight definition for us internally, something maybe we need to look at. Our students overwhelmingly show that they believe that they're engaging in critical thinking, and they're also engaging in activities that ask them to do creative problem solving and work through that. We do believe that across the whole, that we'll continue to invest in some of the processes where we're having reflective conversations with our leaders as well as other work groups about how do we meet our students when they come to us at any point in their educational journey, whether it's PK-12 or whether they're entering as ninth graders or a senior year? How can we invest in our students? What kind of multi-tiered system of support do we want to wrap around academic, behavioral, and social-emotional needs to help ensure that our students are ready to meet their post-secondary plans? We know that we do better than the state, and I try to bring that as a point of pride because as we've shared, too, nearly 1 in 9 students are from Bismarck. So to do well and then outperform ourselves, that sometimes statistically is a tough uphill battle, but I think that's met with resolve. As again, what I would lastly say with this, I've said it maybe before, is we do celebrate kids graduating, but they don't just graduate at our high schools. They graduate from our district, and that kindergarten teacher, that fourth-grade teacher, that middle school music teacher, all those individuals had a role in helping form that with the parents and the rest of the community. So I always enjoy taking a look at this report as it helps begin the year, reminding us that when we celebrated graduation and other festivities at the end of last year, it's really about that larger, bigger picture of educating that whole student. So at this point in time, I would certainly stand for any questions that the Board may have of myself.
Board members. Ms. Preskey.
Hi, thank you for this report. I also really enjoy getting it. I guess going to the indicator 2 with the number of students who did not graduate, I'm just wondering, like, what are we doing to try to capture what some of those reasons may be? Like, is there a survey that's done? Are there teachers that are tapped to, you know, find out what, if anything else, that we can do as a district to help them and help them get across that graduation stage and get their diploma?
Thank you, President Hager and Board Member Preskey. I think that there's a short and a long game that's always played, right? You're trying to figure out individually what matters for one student as to why they might be making the decision. Oftentimes, our counselors or another caring adult who had been invested with a student might know some of that background and that story, you know, and sometimes we have to be professional onion peelers and peel back and figure out what's going awry, but also then looking for trends. So to that end, one of the processes that we kind of put forward, as alluded to this a few years ago, we really started doubling down in process. I'd experienced before with academic alert, really trying to track credits along, hey, it's the end of their first semester as a freshman. Not saying you're not going to graduate, but you've fallen just a little bit off course. If you compound that across the next four years, you're not going to make it. So having those honest conversations, you know, we always want to make sure that kids don't feel like it's not, like you're lost and you're drowning, never going to be able to recover, but being able to have that conversation early in, often, not only with the student but with the parent, I think, is an important step. We do also have a process that I put together where we work with the APs, Assistant Principals, our counselors, our social workers, school psychs, other people that are wrapped around those services, liaisons, and we call it kind of grad roundup. Students that have dropped out, we have a tracking document that's internal where it's shared with each school, and an adult's trying to make meaningful contact and talk to parent, talk to a student, inviting them back in. Mr. Calvota, Joe Calvota, the principal at South Central, he has shared with me several times, you know, sometimes you make that call and you don't think you get much, you know, traction, but all of a sudden, four months later, when a kid comes back to say, you know, when you gave me that call, I didn't think anyone cared, and you called, and I've been thinking about, no one even cares that I'm gone, and so I came back and now I graduated. So again, we know that that's individually best done one-on-one. We do try to look for if there are trends that are occurring, but part of the discussion that Dr. Fosnot and I even had today was reflective of a conversation I had with our Assistant Principals at the secondary level last week, is just being cognizant of that our graduation rates are really, really strong if you're here for the seven years. And in that is a celebration, but it's also a call to action for understanding that when new students come to us, it doesn't mean that they're not, you get those layups, you get the kids that have everything going right and their parents are going to help support them. But if we have some early signs, what can we do to rally? What conversations internally can we start doing, not just in high school, but even in middle school or elementary about, hey, how do we onboard? How do we take care of this kid? Wrap some supports around them so that academically, socially, and emotionally that they're on the right track? And so I think that's one of the biggest calls for us. I think that we also are doing a lot of things about figuring out where can we figure out their passions. Dr. Fosnot has talked about career in technical education, again, hooking into students. We know the data that sometimes when kids see themselves and a future possible, that that can help increase that. I do think that it's important for us to, at times, step back and realize that we saw that dip across our state, too. But again, we continue to have some demographic issues that are a little bit more challenging that's growing, but with that, we still are outperforming, I think, within those same controls.
If I could continue, what does that 84%, what does that equate to in the number of kids? Do you have any idea or roundabout what that would be?
In terms of the number of students that graduated last year?
Yeah, how many did not?
I don't want to miscalculate the number. We're around 900-some kids that graduated last year, so it'd be about 160 if you consider it. That's a little bit higher than, I believe, our number's slightly lower than that, so I'd say 120. That's relative, that's 120 students' lives. That's 120 sons and daughters.
Yep. And then I guess the other question I have is just, a lot of this data is 23, 24, 22, 23. Like, how do we get more current data when we, you know, just had the 25 graduation? Why are we getting, why is it two years old? And does that mean that, would we have more current data if we pushed this report a little later? You know, I don't know if that's a, something we should look at to have more relevant numbers.
When we began the conversation with coherent governance and Mr. Lee, Board Member Lee can probably recall some of this, the discussion was, the train is like, we always want to look one whole year at a time, and we don't want to be in the middle of the year looking at different data, and then different data, and then different data, because then which year are we talking about? So that's why we bring this data when we do. Additionally, this data is not updated on a regular insured date by DPI until usually an early fall, so we wouldn't be able to bring data for the 2025 year, but by having it the following year, we have not only graduation, but we have some internal mechanism data as well as our, for example, our post-secondary enrollment data. We're able to start comparing a little bit closer. And so those were some of the decisions about seven, eight years ago, when the Board at the time said, okay, we understand, that's why we're bringing this year, so it's always kind of just trailing. That's been the habit.
Dr. Fosnot, do you have something to add?
No, I think Board Member Preskey's questions are really good. I would add, yeah, when he asked the very personal question, when it's, when we're talking about, let's get the number right, 84%, right? So we're talking about 16% of kids that started that ninth-grade cohort didn't graduate on time, that's real souls, right? That's souls of kids. I would add, if you go into Insights as well, you see our dropout rate is 4%. So part of that group is 4% of kids who dropped out at some point during the pathway. And I think Dr. Johnson's right. We just had this discussion today about some of that data, is if kids that really stay in that seven-year window with us, start, stay with us that seven years, that graduation result is very powerful, not only for the total, but even some of our most challenging subgroups. As, and I'm going to question you on this, you said 100% for indigenous students, was that a 24, 25 data or is that a 23, 24 data?
That's actually 25 data.
Okay, so that's fresh data. So that's a really good result when we have those kids all the way through, but I think you're exactly right, and I would, I would offer to you, Board Member Preskey and to Board members, you've heard of us talk about that Panorama Data Warehouse product that we're rolling out actually this fall to teachers and our staff. We started last year. That early warning dashboard that Dr. Johnson's mentioning for our leaders to follow and track how our kids are doing so you can pick up those indicators early, was at best difficult for people to navigate. That took getting data from multiple data sources and having someone who is good enough to put that into one shared Excel sheet and be able to interpret that. I think the beauty that I see with the Panorama product is taking that early warning dashboard, being attendance data, classroom performance data, behavior data, put it into one suite. So really, teams of teachers can now see that early warning data and intervene, to your point, let's get to these kids earlier so we can, and make a difference. And again, if we need to focus on the ones that are, are coming into us outside of that seven-year window, like they're coming in, leaving, coming out, leaving, coming back to us, okay, that's good, but let's keep an eye on them. Let's be ready to intervene earlier. I think that's a positive. Hopefully that'll do that. But yeah, you're right. I mean, the data is always a little older. Could we push this off a couple months? I would push it off, even though I know DPI usually gets us to us in August. I'd probably push it off a little deeper in the fall, just so that data was consistent. But again, I think to Dr. Johnson's point is, all through this year, you're going to be looking at 24, 25 data, right? Got that right? 24, 25 data all year. If we did that, we just need to push it off to where DPI has it on ND Insights. Really, all this report is built off ND Insights, so it's public consumable data. We use the same suite information as anybody can look at today. We just have to push it back so we got that data to us, since we're still waiting for some.
Mr. Lee.
Thank you, President Hager. Yeah, I appreciate the integrity of the data. I think it's tough sometimes to acknowledge you've dropped four percentage points, but I don't think it's systemic, you know, anything we're doing in BPS. I've always felt that target of 95% is really high, especially when you think of the dropout rate being 4%, and that's just unfortunate. Yeah, we would love to, you know, have a target of 100% and have it achievable. I don't think it is. I don't even think 95% is. So I think it's one of those metrics we could look at. We've been at 85, 88, 84, you know, we, I mean, even moving it down to 90% leaves us with a stretch goal. But really exciting, I think, is the completer rate. I think that's hugely important, that, you know, kids who don't graduate aren't just done or reaching more to complete their education. That's more important to me than probably any other metric. So yeah, just a few comments. Thank you, Mr. President.
President Hager, just to comment again, you may know this, but again, as we speak to you tonight, also to the community, to Board Members, Lee's comment, too, is if I, as a 16-year-old, complete my GED two years early before I graduate, I actually count as a dropout. I don't count as a graduate, but yet I'm a completer. I might actually be in the military, serving my country overseas as a GED, and enrolled in the military before my fellow classmates walk across the stage. That's possible, and that has happened. And so I think to Mr. Lee's, Board Member Lee's, point, that's also why we do care a lot about that completer rate, because it also takes those unique situations into consideration.
Mr. Eastgate.
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Johnson. Thanks, President Hager. I was just going to comment also on the targets, actually, and I was going to throw in the idealistic comment of the evening and just saying, why isn't it 100%? Because I know it's not realistic. I know it's not what the state's at, but like, even as we looked at the 84%, Dr. Fosnot's quick math rate, it was 16% off. He didn't say we're 11% off of our goal. It's 16% off because those are all real students, real kids. So again, I was just going to throw it out there. I like, I do like, I was glad Mr. Lee brought up the completer rate, though, too, and that Dr. Johnson talked about it, because I think completer rate is maybe what we're more looking at for that. But I'd be personally, as a Board Member, I would rather see a target of 100% for that, and I don't care if we put an asterisk by it because we know we're going to fail to make, not no, but the realities of all the data states that we won't get there. But that seems like one that we're okay failing to make, you know, reasonable progress on because it is our goal. I mean, I would say every kid we get through here, we want to get to either graduation or to a completer stage. So again, idealistic comment, but thought it's worth putting out there.
If I may?
Dr. Fosnot.
President Hager, I respect that very much. I think of all the data points that have been talked over the course of my career of tracking student success, tracking school success, the one I've always put my, where on the front is graduation rate or completer rate, right? Because that's the ultimate goal. We all know that. You start kindergarten, what do kids, what do parents think about? Getting my kid to graduation, right? It's, I mean, I didn't have a graduation party for my son, for my son, I had it for me because we got him across the end line, right? It was that big committed goal. So I do appreciate that. I think the other part of it, and I would tell you, never in my experience have we had a, I've never been in a school that had 100%. There's always been a life story that impacted a kid that caused them not to complete, right? Whatever that may be. The other one that I would say, which would need some tweaking, is that Choice Ready Indicator. I think just as like now, you have an indicator that says, what, 70, I think that's your goal? 60, 66% of your kids will attend to your school, sorry, your goal's 70%. I think that's modifying over time, too. I think the idea that you have to go to a two-year school has tempered over my duration in education, and I want you to graduate high school, and I want you to get into a career that you want and be successful at that career. There's two goals, that's it, right? If that's directly out of school, you go to a career, a two-year or four-year, I don't think it's as much important for me to go to a post-secondary institution as was follow your passion, find a career, be successful in it. And we don't really have a really good way of tracking that. That's the, that's the hard part with this data, is you can't go out and grab information from those two-year post-graduates, you might say, and say, are you in the career you envisioned yourself being in? It gets to be a little loose data, but I wanted to point on that one, too. Just, I know we're not reaching that 70% mark, but I'm okay with that. Again, philosophically, I think you know, I want kids to find their passion and get into the job they want. That doesn't necessarily mean they have to go to BSC or UND or NDSU. Just find that passion and go seek it out. But I'm also very proud of our Choice Ready Indicator. I thought that was a highlight of this report as well. Our kids are coming out with more and more skills, so they do have an option of where they want to go post-graduation, so.
Mr. Lee.
Thank you, President Hager. Just one more follow-up comment. The danger of a target being too high here, and I'm not suggesting that we do this in any way, shape, or form currently, but would be that you create a diploma mail, you try to get kids a diploma no matter what, and we don't want to do that either, right? We want it to be meaningful, we want it to have something of substance behind it. So that would be, you know, where if we were ever hitting 100%, I'd be, you know, you're going to be taken aback a little bit, like, hmm, really? So it's tricky with these data things, because of course, we want every child to graduate. We want to be at 100%, but I think there is something to being realistic. If we were to hold admins' feet to the fire on 100% and they were to change the way they were doing things, that wouldn't necessarily be good, is my point, so. So I have.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Good comments, good dialogue. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. With that, I would entertain a motion. Mr. Eastgate.
President Hager, I would move that we, R1 Mega Result, Making Reasonable Progress with Exception.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, Dr. Scher.
Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Preskey?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes. Item 6, Matters Reserved for Board Action. We have nothing on tonight's agenda that falls into this column, so that brings us down to the consent agenda. Mr. Lee.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the consent agenda.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Dr. Scher.
Peterson?
Yes.
Preskey?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes. Item 8, Superintendent's Report, Annual Superintendent's Report. Dr. Fosnot.
Thank you, President Hager. Board Members, you've already received this in your inbox, and actually, it's been out for the public consumption on our website and sent out via social media for the last couple weeks. So I don't mean to kind of hit old news, but it is a little bit old news, but I just wanted to reiterate to the public that this annual report is really part of the superintendence communication plan, that that's my commitment to you and this community, that I'm going to share some relevant data about your district in just a different way. Again, you have all these governance reports you get to see how your district's doing. There's multiple ways you can keep track of how your district's doing, including ND Insights, which we've talked about tonight. This just becomes a really short primer, kind of hopefully informing the community about what we've been working on the last year, and also maybe what we see as our future endeavors. So inside there is a little quick letter to you and the community, and then you have two pages of just good facts, things that I really think are, people want to consume, they want to read, really simple and easy. I would tell you, you see your average daily membership, that's the average number of students who are enrolled in BPS on any given day across the last two years. So we're seeing that grow by 99 kids from our Spring '24 to '25 report. You have everything from ACT to state performance. Again, we just talked about that, but that's more focused on ELA and math. I would point out something that we did this year is add the AP and dual credit at the bottom, just to see the number of, the participation rate in all those. And I have, for the viewing public, as you already know, we're going to bring to you a report here very soon in our Focus on Success on our AP Dual Credit Program, so we can highlight those a little bit and give you some more background information. But really proud of that, as far as the participation rate in all those, both those programs. And then on the second page of the facts, you'll see things about our budget and what our previous, this is last year's expenditures and revenues we're sitting at. A section on staffing, so people know, like, we're the second-largest employer, I believe, in the community, so it's important to keep track of that. And people have been watching in the past some of our retention rates, I'd say, in the area of teachers, and where our retention rate is actually going up. So that's good. We're keeping our professionals. That's important. We've talked about that a lot, about keeping them, retaining them, so we don't have to go out and find really hard-to-fill teaching positions. go out and find really hard-to-fill teaching positions. So I'm really, really proud of that. You have some information on what it costs to educate every single student in the state, or in our district, sorry, some number of lunches and breakfasts we provide, which become a really big number, when you talk of over 2 million meals in a year. Our team does a really good job. And then transportation, and transportation is a challenge, and when you start talking about, we have buses that do over 2,600 trips across the state of North Dakota in any given year, nearing almost a million miles, I mean, we're bearing down on a million miles. That's a big system, that's complex. It is not something that just, you start a bus, you drive one around, and it's really simple, much more complex than my years in Ellendale with my nine little buses. It, it is a big system, and provide a little information on that. The last two pages for consumers, there's a little bit of information, again, about some of the big things that we've tasked with this last year and what we see coming forward. Really want to talk about our efficient services, most of all of us, we're going to talk a little bit about bell time here next, and, and working on bell time in transportation, but also our work in CTE, some of our budget constraints due to federal funding and that, and this was written a little bit before we knew federal funding was coming. And then just about some of our educators, we are two years in a row, and just for the sake of, again, community knowledge, Ms. Wheeling, if you haven't heard, Ms. Leah Wheeling at Assembly Middle School, has now three years in a row, BPS has had a North Dakota Teacher of the Year candidate. We've been lucky enough to get two of those as North Dakota Teacher of the Year, and we're hopeful for a trifecta, three out of three, that'd be great. So the last page deals with our strategic plan. I know we talked about that when we built it, that this report becomes a feedback loop to our community. So just kind of circling that feedback loop for readers of this to know what we're doing in a strategic plan and the, and the one little sliver of value this report has for, for providing information to our community about how your school's doing. So I just present this to you officially tonight, the board meeting, so our community can have it. So, and again, it can be found on our district website if people don't have it.
Thanks, Dr. Fosnot. B, transportation and bell time update.
Well, it's, it'll be going out over official communication channels this week, again, to remind parents that bell times are changing, starting next week, Tuesday, on the 19th, first day of school. I just want to reiterate to everybody listening that this is a project, a process, that's a year and a half in the making. This work to improve the efficiency reliability of our transportation system was really underway before I even took the chair of superintendent in the district. So it was something we wanted to work on, and we knew we were going to bring in a consultant to, to tell us, give us recommendations how to approve that, and that happened my first year in the district, and then all of last year, we spent time talking to patrons, talking to public in our community forums about what could we do, what's it look like, particularly focus on, focusing on a two-tiered bell time schedule. And so it's coming to reality, we're a week away from that starting. I do want to, I do want to appreciate that it will be a challenge on some families, I do, but I also know that it was a challenge before. What we were doing before the last two years wasn't working. We had buses that were not showing up at AM stops when there's, we planned on them. We had gaps in our employees finding drivers to get in those buses and be on time. We also had kids at multiple of our element, or middle schools, sorry, that were waiting 90, 90-plus minutes to find a bus at the end of the school day because of route disruptions and the time it took to get there. Having middle school kids waiting 90 to 120 minutes for a bus is never a productive thing, right? So we had to do something. We're hopeful that that won't happen. I talked to our, our transportation director today, and I said, now, okay, now the goal is, the goal is that on the first day of school, maybe all through that week, that at our bus stops, when we say we're going to be there at X time, within a couple of minutes either way, because of traffic lights, I hope that we have buses at all those stops within that window of time, so parents can trust that we're going to pick up their kid and take care of them and get them to school on time. And that would be our goal. And for the parents that maybe want to be able to track that, remember this year, we have the new Bus Finder on your phone, that app, so you can't track every bus in all those, but you definitely can watch and see when your child's bus enters that pickup stop. You can put a little circle around it, say, give me a text when that bus is in that little radius, so I know that that bus showed up on time, either picking up or dropping off their child. So I think that's a positive step forward, too, so parents have some confidence that we're doing, providing efficient and reliable services to our community. So I'm hopeful, and I hope it works like a charm, so we'll see. Hopefully I haven't taken too many calls, please send them my way, so.
Thanks, Dr. Fosnot. Item C, school policy updates.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I just thought it'd be beneficial to inform parents of a few policy changes. The first one, FFI, Personal Electronic Communication Devices, that's the cell phone policy. I mean, that's the official name, everybody calls it the cell phone policy. I trust that all the schools have sent out information to parents about the cell phone policy and those changes. Everybody should know, this policy revision is due to statute. This is a law change in North Dakota, all schools in North Dakota are adapting to this, and I would encourage you that if you have questions about what the policy, how it's going to be implemented, what the rules are, maybe what the consequences are, how to, even if you have questions on how to adapt to maybe something your child has a unique health need, you need to contact your principals, you need to talk to your buildings directly, because how that's going to operate in a elementary school, middle school, high school is uniquely different based on that level. But really, I think our, I know our principals and leaders have been putting out information to families, so hopefully they can look at that and see that. But I did provide a link to the policy, if people want to see it, or they can find it on our website. The other one is GACB Patriot, I guess, do you have any questions on that one? We've talked about that one for a long time, so it's an extensive conversation on cellphones. GACB is about patriotic exercises, that was, again, passed by our legislature this last session, that the start of every day, every student, every grade across all schools in the state of North Dakota, just like we did, will stand and have an opportunity to recite the pledge. So there's some revisions there, just so we're very clear, we have to provide the opportunity, it's still a kid's choice to stand and recite the pledge. I personally hope they do, I, I hope my children would, but at the same time, it's a personal choice. We live in a country of freedom, and we want to encourage kids and guide kids in how to do it, but there, you know, some kids may make it, not make a choice to do that, but we're going to provide the opportunity that they can stand and recite the pledge with us. So all the schools will be doing that, starting the first day of school. And, any questions on that one? Okay. And last one is FFK, suspension and expulsion, and probably this affects very few families, right? We don't suspend or expel many kids as a total population, but there was legislative action, again, on expulsions this last session, that allowed schools to expel for greater than the school year. Before, unless you had a weapon, you brought a firearm to school, you could be expelled a calendar year. Everything else could only go until the end of the school year. So theoretically, a child could do something pretty egregious on May 1st, and would technically only be expelled to the end of the school year, for 20 days, let's say, 25 days. The legislative change now says, if you did something very egregious, like drugs, bringing them into school, distributing something like that, that would only be an expulsion to the end of the school year. Now, the, the expulsion board can consider going longer, they can push it beyond this end of the school year into the next school year. So I just think it's good to be aware that those consequences lay out there for, for, if something would happen, those consequences are available to school. So hope to never use them, we don't want to, but they are out there, so. I would stand for any questions you have.
Okay, thanks, Dr. Fosnot. Seeing none, major projects, Dr. Share, Dr. Fosnot.
Thank you, I will give the major projects update. So we're to the point where we need to be ready by Tuesday, we will have students there. So I just got a text from Mr. Mueller, our Director of Technology, that said, we are live, network and Wi-Fi is up and running today. Tomorrow, hopefully, we'll be able to hook in the fire panel, because we need to have life safety to get our certificate of occupancy from the city, and so, yeah, it's exciting. It's, it's one, it's that point in a construction project where you can go day to day and you can see change, so that's pretty exciting. Director Pat Phillips, we're starting to stage the equipment and that goes in the labs and the furniture and stuff, so we'll be ready for, for students on next Tuesday. I do have a few pictures there for you, and like I said, these were probably taken on Friday, if we would go there today, it'd be even more change. And then the financials there for your review. I would entertain any questions the board would have on our singular project we have right now. I guess technically, we, we still have Hughes on there, but our active project, Silver Ranch Career Academy.
Okay, not seeing any questions. So it brings us down to item nine, all agenda items have been considered, I just declare this meeting adjourned.